Yeah, about what's weird is I'm not seeing this at all. It's over here. Oh, okay, there it is. All right. We don't believe February 19th, 2025 select board meeting. Do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm wanting to add an executive.
Anything else?
We should talk about. I think with the H111. And there's been one cat in St. Albans that's died from eating a wild bird. I think he needs to either stay in or find a permit home. For his own safety.
I think, Dr. You want to say anything?
No, but. I mean, he's already been shot once and eaten a bird that's been shot.
You think he's, what, nine?
Nine, 10.
All right, we'll move on to the select approval of the select board meetings of February 2025. Take a motion to accept.
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Open your discussion. Any corrections? Can you see additions, additions? Hearing none then? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carry. Comments from the community? Do we have people online that would like to give any comments to the select board? And we'll move on to correspondence. We have an email from the Royal County Planning Commission that April 10th at 6 o'clock, the Royal County Planning Commission and the Ramon Leaks of City of Town will host a joint meeting of select board members and trustees from the Royal County municipalities at the Green Mountain Tech Center. You save the date, further information will be coming. Now you can pop that onto your calendar. There's been a discussion at the planning commission on whether this should be a warned meeting or not. But I'm gonna ask Michelle to warn it.
And this is the, um, the, uh, meeting for the April 10th. Needs to be warned.
Just to be said, it won't hurt.
This is not then the meeting that the planning commission is gonna do. This is the one that they were gonna.
This is.
Some people say, you know, more than, um, two p- select board members attend, then it's a regular meeting. It should be publicized. Other people say, no, we're not making any decisions, but it won't hurt to just ma- to warn it.
Is it open to the, it's not open to the public?
It's, it's the, the invitations being sent to the select board.
But not, it's not open to the public?
They have to have you open to them, but they're not invited. I'm sorry.
Fair. That was at the Randall campus?
The Green Mountain Tech.
Oh, yeah.
And I'll pass around the January sheriff's report. The LTC is having select board organization onboarding. Workshop, February 27th, 9 to 10, Zoom. Anyone's interested? I'll pass that around too. Hey. Waste water ordinance update and preliminary notice, a select board review and discussion on the new language, um, that was asked by the board to, uh, this water committee.
So I think that was distributed to all of you. This is trying to work out the opt-out language and we had back and forth about what the criteria for opt-out will be. The language here was developed with Stone Environmental trying to um, kind of strike a balance between, um, ensuring that, um, people who don't really have other options without impacting the river or neighboring, neighboring properties are connected while respecting property rights of people who have land, you know, enough to, to not connect. Um, so what we came up with is this, which is that um, the other criteria that we already talked about being outside the floodplain, not having a failed system and having um, at least 200 or 2,500 square feet that is not encumbered by well shields. Um, the well shields are being identified as part of the uh, product development process anyway, so that will not have a requirement like the prior language where somebody would need to hire their own engineers. Uh, if you, because I know that was also a concern. Uh, but I didn't read the full language. There's also reference to the rules, who can do that, qualified work. Uh, so the idea here would be that if there's reasonable enough lands, um, not encumbered by well shields, not in those floodplain, people could have the option to um, to opt out. And there's still a criteria, if you have a permit and the half the system hasn't failed, you can also opt out. Um, so happy to answer questions, you know, go into the details more. We'll just note that, you know, because this isn't requiring on-site soil investigation, it is possible that that 2,500 square feet could have, you know, poor soils, groundwater, so there is still a risk of opting out, but I think that the waiver from the select board is that people are adults and property owners, they should be able to make their own decisions. There's not a potential for negative impacts that kind of well or neighbor. So that's what we tried to come up with to, to balance those competing issues.
Yeah, I, I think that this is a fantastic, fantastic compromise. I love the language. It's still allows freedoms, but also, you know, protects not only their own, their own freedoms, but also their neighbors. I, I think it's excellent.
Right, thank you.
When you say 2,500 square feet, is that a quarter acre? Or more?
That's, that's less than a quarter acre, so I'll do really rough math. Just divided by 40,000. It actually works out to like, um,
5%?
5%, yeah.
Yeah, almost 6%.
Yeah.
Of an acre.
Yeah. It's a fairly small land area, but it's roughly, you know, we're doing, it's, it's roughly the land demand for non-sense system. Give or take.
Any other questions?
So with that then, I think one other about just making sure that the ordinance sense properly connected to the adoption enforcement statute, LSJP to look at that. Uh, so I think the next step then for the select board, if there are any other questions about the ordinance is to start the, the formal adoption notice. Adoption.
I have one more.
Yeah.
Seeing as how our latest Trump's democracy is killing off different programs and things, what's gonna happen from, say, the tank to the main line to the wastewater site? Who's gonna be responsible to pay for that if it's ever damaged? Is it gonna be the purple people on the system or is it gonna be the whole town?
So you mean in the event that
It's ever damaged?
That it's damaged. So, and I think the second part of your question was if.
No, no, who's gonna be having to pay for? Because I'm afraid Trump's gonna get rid of FEMA.
I think if Trump were to get rid of FEMA, that would also be significant impact to your roadway infrastructure. Um, so I mean, who would be responsible for that, um, in the event that there's not, FEMA's not in existence, there's not public assistance? Um, that's speculative of, of what happens with FEMA. Um,
But is there anything in there that state who's going to be responsible? Is it all gonna fall back to the people on the system or the town citizens?
So it is public infrastructure. Um, but ultimately I think that would be a case for this, that the select board at that time would need to decide how you would fund the repairs of the system if, if FEMA was no longer in existence.
I think it needs to be in the bylaws to stop this.
There is, uh, a part of the maintenance fees will be a, um.
Well, I mean, Plainfield just put out $12 million to repair theirs last year. Two or three years ago, either 14 or 16 million in Johnson to repair their system.
And in, and in that case, they're replacing the whole plant and that's, that 14 million is the replacement. You would be talking about the, the pipes, so that would be, you know, a wash.
A portion of the.
A portion of the, yes, yeah.
But I mean, I think it should be in there to protect the ones in the village. There should be some sort of wording or whatever.
But just in this hypothetical dealing, if, for example, we did have language that put the entire onus of the repairs of the system on the wastewater system users and FEMA or a FEMA-like body doesn't go away, could that prohibit us from applying for disaster recovery? Because it's while it is public infrastructure and everything, if it's not. If, uh, in my mind, it's equivalent to public road, private road. Yes, they're all roads in the town. Yes, a lot of people use them, but if the private road is, you know, owned privately and paid for and maintained, taken care of by only the people that use it, we can't apply, the town can't apply for federal aid. Would you stop chewing on me?
Okay.
Uh, I, I just, I don't know. I mean, and, and we're, we're dealing with, with what ifs and make-believes anyway. I mean, no way.
I'm just to the point of he's killed so many different sections of the government.
And he's got three years and nine months left.
Yes.
You know?
My thing is, I think the terminology needs to be in there. If the mains, not the pipe from the house to the tank, that should be the landowners. But from the tank, the main line up through, there should be some wording stating that the town is responsible for the repairs.
Well, there's a designated reserve fund. It's going to be built up.
It's that.
If that doesn't, you know, it's all the water, 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 water. You know, and it, and a new select board, and I would imagine that if it's overwhelming that the people in the village could not absorb that kind of cost, that, you know, it's a discussion that they could have with the select board and if they have to bond or whatever, but I, I don't feel like tying.
Now you're saying the people within the town village is gonna have to take the bond.
And then you have the state revolving loan fund that you have access to.
But that's, that's still putting the burden of the burden on the people within the town.
I did not say that. I said the select, you could have a conversation with the select board about the town bonding if, if, you know, it was so high and that this reserve fund could not handle that.
Which would be what the state revolving loan fund does for stuff, which is funded by projects that they've given out money. The interest in that money goes back to fund new projects.
And, and at the end of the day, if the wastewater system can't repair itself, like you said, it is public infrastructure, you know, the town, town as a whole has a duty implied that we would have to figure out how to make that better. Right? I mean, in, in thinking catastrophic events, wastewater system goes down, is not able to be used and there's not enough money to cover the repair in the wastewater funds. What does the town do? Say, sorry folks, move out of your house or get a, a blue lagoon put on your front lawn? Or does the town have an onus to, to maintain the infrastructure? I mean, my fear is that if we put that kind of language in there, it could restrict us from underfunding opportunities where it would pigeonhole us into having to follow these bylaws. If we keep going, we allocate, gives us flexibility to start on case by case. That's just my feeling.
It's just like the difference between a fire district and a municipal. The fire district, since it's private, has a hard time getting funding. But if it's municipals, you opens up grants to in the future, any legislature, state, or whatever is left, you can go apply for grants and all that stuff.
Yeah. And I do think I'm thinking about that question, you know, the comparison to the, the plants. In the case of this, the damage would be most likely to the collection system. And, you know, we're talking speculatively about a major disaster enough to do erosion damage to that. Um, without FEMA, you know, there are also temporary measures, you know, I, I, I know the, the water system has temporary measures that could be used in a situation like that to keep things going while you're figuring out the, the long-term repair plan. I mean, even in Johnson with the plant under, I think it was under 10 feet of water in some places, the collection system and the pipes are still functional and a part of this design has been trying to Peter can talk about this more than I've asked him when he talks to you about the 60% plans in those areas where there could be vulnerability because of proximity to the river, you know, make things as far as possible. I mean, you, you would be losing roadways at that point too. Um, so um, but we can, I can ask Peter to talk more about sort of the flood protection pieces. Um, so that you have a sense and it's on the record of how those kinds of things are being put into the design. Um, if FEMA goes away entirely, I think there would be a bigger discussion about municipal budgeting and capital planning and um, you know, that would probably be a discussion that you'd need to have about your roads and bridges too. Point. Don't, I don't know if I gave you resolution or a lot of things to worry about, but, um, I think we're all thinking about what the future would look like with all the impacts we've had over the last, you know, 20, 24 months.
So first I think we should, um, vote to adopt, uh, listening to our language.
So we make a motion.
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? opposed? Kurt's opposed. And I wanted to quickly go over when the. Get the details going. Quickly go over, um, the next steps. In our March meeting, the board will hold a public hearing on the ordinance. Uh, it will be entered into the minutes. It needs to be posted five places in the municipality and then we need to put it in the paper, not more than 14 days following, um, the adoption. And it tells you what needs to be on there. It's not effective, um, until 60 days after its adoption. We can work with Michelle on that. And Delinda. Yeah. Hey, municipal planning grants, Seth?
Yeah, so, um, next thing is, um, this, uh, year's municipal planning grants are, the deadline at the end of March, um, there have been some changes in state statute that will require some amendments to zoning bylaws everywhere. Most of them have to do with, um, housing related things have subdivision accessory dwelling units are gonna be probably the biggest for the smaller towns like Willcut. Um, the municipal planning grant, uh, would be a good way to get some resources for LCPC staff time to do that work. Uh, I also understand that the DRB and planning commission have identified like a laundry list of some other things they'd like to have worked on. Um, so the town of Elmore is also looking, they're gonna need to do similar changes. And when we put the two projects together, um, you know, the total project costs of one town doesn't quite get to what you need to, for a municipal planning grant and it's pretty small to do the backend management. Um, so we were gonna suggest to both towns to consider doing a consortia application, which would just basically be, you know, working together. Your zoning would still be separate. We would still work separately with the, the two planning commissions, uh, but from an administrative standpoint, it would be one contract. Um, we were planning on asking Willcut to be the, um, lead of a consortia, which would mean that the grants would go through your system. Um, however, Alec in our office brought to Tash and I's attention earlier this week that Willcut is also considering applying for a better connections grant. Um, and if you do that, you can be a part of a consortia, but can't be the lead. So we are going to ask Elmore, um, or prep Elmore to be the lead. Um, there's a resolution to sign, but that resolution needs to identify the, the, the point of contact, who would be, um, someone from Elmore. So I can't give you the resolution today. We'll bring it to you at your first meeting in March. Um, for signature. Um, but wanted to get the approval to go forward with the, um, with the consortia application authorized signature of the resolution with, um, the chair of the Elmore Select Board listed as your authorizing official for the consortia. Um, and then want to discuss the match. So looking at the work, sort of if you were just to do, if there's a 10% match, which, you know, needs to be a cash match. Um, if you were to just to do the, um, uh, S100, that's the state housing bill changes lead the about $5,000 worth of ti- time, including the adoption process, including the adoption process in that, so a $500 match. Um, I'm not 100% clear on what the other, um, other needs that the planning commission and DRB have identified, but just on past experience, working with Willcut, um, on their buy, on nearby laws 10 years ago. Um, I, I'd suppose, um, you know, another three to $5,000 of total project costs or another 300 to $500 of, of match. Um, and that could be spread over two fiscal years. Uh, if you come back and say, we can only afford the match for the um, for the, um, S100 changes, we would, you know, just do those and try to figure out some other way to make the, um, the bylaws, the other amendments work. I just kind of gave away the hand saying, even if you can't provide the match, we'll figure it out for you. It will make things easier and to the point that Kurt has been making about resources going away, um, our ability to kind of do things without using the state grants could get less as resources go away. So, um, that is, that's, that's the request for tonight. Happy to answer questions if you, if you have them.
I was just working on closing out, um, our last municipal planning grant, which was for 20,000. Uh, 10% match. But we only spent 11,000. We put some of that away. Um, so we have a little bit of money there. Anyway.
So that gets us there, doesn't it?
I know.
Yeah, you just reallocate that. Yeah. I would refer to, since, since it's, since it's been a while since we sat down on the bylaws, and since I know I get questions from, from Tom now and then about different things. I would, if you can afford the match to do, you know, a full $10,000, a whole update, we wouldn't spend it if we didn't need it. Uh, but that, that would be, you know, the, the preference if you have the match. If not, we can, we can cut back.
So it's 10, 10% match?
10% match, yep.
It's only a thousand dollars.
That would only be a thousand dollars, right?
That's less than 14.
I'm sorry. Yeah, the 10% cut, because they're begging.
It's got quite a following, see?
Yeah.
Got a little buzzing.
So are you looking for a motion for that approval or?
Before we do that, what, what is this S100?
Oh, thank you. That is.
Explanation.
No problem. That is the state housing bill. So that has some preemptions. Um, they're actually technically already in effect. Um, I, you know, but it's better to get them addressed, so there's not a potential conflict. Um, it, it, most, so the provisions, um, will do things like, most, mostly in a town like Willcut, impact how you treat, um, accessory dwelling units and, um, two-unit structures, um, meaning you have to will expand and have, you know, the ability of people to do accessory dwelling units. Um, there won't be the veteran caps that there currently are. Willcut's already gone a little bit above the minimum requirements of statute, so they're already, you're a little more um, allowing of accessory dwelling units than the mandated by the state. The other big change will be, um, how you regulate two-unit structures. So, um, Under S one hundred, you can't regulate. Two unit structures more stringently than single unit structures, and it gets a little bit. Well, a single family home with an accessory dwelling that has no limits on bedrooms is basically a two unit structure anyway. So it gets, the other thing that will be, I think, worth talking to the Planning Commission about, and I'm not going to recommend. This one way or the other until talking to them, but it also authorizes in some cases. Municipalities to allow administrative subdivisions. So that would mean like a one lot or two lot subdivision. Being approved by the zoning administrator. You don't have to allow that, but it's something you could consider. And I know that is something, some of the rural towns have really liked having that option because they say what means, you know, a farmer could just. Cut off, you know, a piece of land without going through the, you know, long process. Others have been concerned about. But how do we make sure that there are no floodplain impact or wetland impact? So. It's it's an option we'll present. We won't, I won't make a recommendation at this point because you guys will know best what makes the most sense for Willcut. Then there are some, I I I think those will be the big changes for Willcut. And there are some other procedural things, like how the D R B reviews major subdivisions will have some changes in that, some of the process changes. That we'll need to go through and make sure everything's matched.
But it doesn't have anything in there about the percent of low income housing?
There is not, so I think there's. There's not a mandate in that for for low income housing. No, there's there's not a mandate. The Act two fifty Reform Bill. That is not S one hundred, passed with some language about housing targets. That are independent of S one hundred. And independent of zoning and are really at this point set up as sort of a measure, not a mandate, but. We'll, Tash and I will be coming to talk to you about that in a lot greater detail later this this summer. Or spring, it's not summer yet. Obviously confused. You can, you can provide density bonuses for. Low and moderate income housing. It is an option you have to encourage certain housing types, and you may, I think you already do actually in your bylaws.
Okay.
Answering all my crazy questions.
Would be a motion to approve?
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll make the motion to to approve the grant match, what, up to a thousand? If that's those funds will pull out of.
If you find them, I think I think you have some of the leftover. Grant max money that we can access.
Okay.
I'm second.
Number second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie.
Cut it for me tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing, to a thousand dollar limit, right?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah. I didn't hear it though in the motion.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, well, I'm notoriously bad at this one. Yeah, yeah.
I heard it.
I say, I know who put that was not a cap on.
Motion by Carrie to approve the L P C, L C H to move forward with the consortia application for the municipal planning grant, to be specific. With a grant match of one thousand dollars, seconded by.
Up to. Up to.
Up. Yeah.
Thank you for coming out, Sam.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I wanted to get. It's okay.
Oh, okay.
Joe, you're up. Joe.
Hello.
Hi, Joe.
Hello, how are you?
Good. We asked you to come to attend our meeting tonight just to discuss a couple articles, in case you had questions for town meeting and.
Okay. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I looked at the, I looked at the articles and. I don't, I don't think I have questions. Should I have questions? Is there something? That I should know that I don't know?
No, just I prefer that if you have questions, you ask them now, not early at town meeting. People can, people can ask that, though. I just wanted to make sure you understood them about. What we were doing with the town clerk salary.
Well, maybe you should run through that because I, I mean, I'm always entering the meeting. With a blank slate as far as a brain goes and I. It it is useful to know the background. So if you want to fill me in on the background, that's helpful.
Yeah, so Wilken is like one of four towns in the state that continues to pay their. Town clerk with salary and fees. Fees would be. Two dollars on dog fees, cages for recording fees. If you get a liquor license, all those things, they get a little pot of it. Back in the olden days, that's totally how a town clerk would get paid. And then it kind of evolved where fees wasn't enough, so. You know, the town kicked in a salary too. But being one of only four towns is a very fluctuating. Salary, you know, when everyone was selling their houses and moving to Vermont during COVID. You know, they make lots and lots of money. Now everything's dead and the the mortgage rates are high, no one's. Moving mortgages or buying houses, their salary is low, so this is kind of. Agreeable by the town clerk and the town to just have a flat salary, you know. So there isn't this up and down all the time.
So it's it's an effort to stabilize and make it more predictable.
Right, and then all those fees will go into the town. General fund to offset. For salary.
Okay.
The other article is. The town of Wilken ended up with about a nine acre parcel of land. Up on East Hill, leading into Bear Swamp at Ledoux's property.
Okay.
Are you familiar with that?
Sort of, I I don't exactly the meets and bounds, but I know. When you say ended up with the property, how how did that happen?
Through a tax sale.
Okay. So there was, there was a tax that wasn't paid on the property. And the town took ownership?
Correct.
And instead of selling it? You want to?
Well, this, we spent, we cleaned it up.
Okay.
We cleaned up the property, removed the illegal cabin, it never had any permits or wastewater.
Right, yeah.
It's very swampy. I've walked it, leads into Bear Swamp and it, there's very little land that's. Dry. Or could really even have a building site on it.
Yep.
A lot of the people up in that area have really been pushing for the town to put a conservation easement on it.
Yep.
It's one. It's one of the main ways to get into Bear Swamp.
I'm sorry, it's one of the what?
Main accesses to Bear Swamp.
Okay, yeah.
Through the college conservation.
All in there, the wetland. Kurt Billings can maybe tell you some more because we had, we held a walk this fall, which Kurt led. We had about twenty people join him to look at the land. They were quite. Excited about preserving it, but I'll let him speak a little bit more on that.
Sure.
So, Joe, the main thing with this easement is because there's a lot of arctic plants. That are on this property that would be worth preserving. And having people that are courticulturists or whatever go in and do the studies. But it would allow at least access down through. Onto Sterling and U V M's areas.
Okay.
The better one to talk about this would be Gordon Young's father, John.
Steve.
Or Steve, I mean, yes. To talk about this because with his Northern Studies Program, that's what he mainly did was go on to this area and study it for the wildlife and.
Right.
Habitat and.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, yeah.
Actually, Joe, there's a, in the the town report, there is a full article. I mean, there's a a good summary of it.
Okay.
So our hope is that the voters will allow us to. Put a conservation easement on this property and just allow it to be. Open to anyone to access. I know a lot of birders go in there, people that. Keep track of birds. I have talked to Northern Rivers Land. Trust. They're willing to conserve it. They've been on the property before and looked at it. They do have some requirements for. Conservation and one of them is they like sixty five hundred dollars towards a stewardship fee. We did not put any money in our budget for that. We are hoping that. If the voters approve our moving forward with conserving this land, that we would. Reach out and ask for donations. I have talked to. Northern Rivers this week and they said that. People can make donations. To them, just saying that that's what the money is designated for, for the conservation stewardship fee for this project. And then that way they can get a tax deduction on it.
Okay.
That is the plan anyway.
Yeah. That sounds, that sounds good.
And then that is the regular. Morning. Melinda will. Pick up a little agenda for you. The Girl Scouts will be doing their flag ceremony and. We'll have different groups. She'll put it on there, different groups that will be setting up tables, wastewater and schoolhouse and. So forth, the Planning Commission, but we'll have that all together for you.
Okay, that's always helpful.
And we don't. Justice for dogs is not selling food. They don't want to sell food. The. Fire auxiliary is going to, but it's going to be really not too much.
Okay.
That's the best we could do.
Oh, all right.
Freshness.
Well, they have coffee, they have hot dogs and.
Coffee and hot dogs, I think that's what I heard.
Well, that may be enough.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
Oh, thank you. And appreciate, as usual, appreciate your work. For the town, thank you very much. I'll just, I'll mute and stay on for a while.
Hi, Allison.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Are you, are you guys on schedule? Am I up or?
You are, yes.
Oh, great, okay, perfect timing then.
Yeah.
Great that you guys are good on agenda. Hi, I don't think I know everyone. I just want, sorry, I can't be there in person. I live in Morris Town, but uh. Next time might be able to, but have three kids, so I was just driving in circles, but April's supposed to get home in time for. For uh for this, which I'm really glad to make it. Thanks for getting me on the agenda. It's good to reconnect with some. I'm Allison Link. And I am from Healthy Lemoyle Valley, a program of the Lemoyle Family Center. We are a substance prevention. Program and coalition and we work to reduce youth substance misuse. But also reduce substance use, misuse across the lifespan. That's with some additional funding that that we have, and so it's not just about reducing youth substance misuse. But as you likely know, substance prevention is not just about direct service or substance, you know, working directly with youth and. It's not just about the substances, it's about so many other factors, you know, that are about a a person, an individual, a child's. Life and so many intersections in the community with what we call of like building protective factors. So building like buffers against negative outcomes for our youth. And we're trying to reduce the risk factors and those are on lots of different levels. And at Healthy Lemoyle Valley, we work a lot more on like a systems level. So for example, I work with all different sectors with community outreach or policy. Working with a few different towns on municipal. Their their municipal plans and including health and wellness chapters because healthy community is what it's about. And everyone plays a role in in prevention. And so I work with retailers of adult use substances, faith-based institutions, organizations and businesses in the area. All all different kinds of partners, so I'm coming to meet you with that. And how much time is, do I have?
About fifteen minutes.
Oh, perfect, okay. So. So there are a lot of things that we could talk about and for sure, you know, cannabis is one of them. But what I, you know, but I really thought to, you know, give like a little bit of framing because some I haven't met before. Is just really about like prevention, like to think about what it really is and what it means. And some of the work that I've been doing is. Thinking about how like equity work is prevention or today, I don't know if you can, oh, here's mine. If I don't know if you can see how big I am, but I love rec- rec- heart recovery. I was at the State House today with. The Substance Recovery Community and it was a day at the State House for advocacy there. And so we really see our. Work is together. Recovery is prevention. Equity is prevention, healthy community is wellness. And and you may have heard of us, if you don't know of us already, through some prevention sponsorships that came. To Willcut that in the past years, one was for pickleball. And I'm just curious, yeah, curious about that. And another one a few years back. Was from the three four fifty initiative that Willcut's a partner of and. And community garden. Work back that and and signage and and, you know, and working just to support healthy community over time. So. My my goal of connecting was to reconnect because there are some new people. But also to hear from you and to real, you know, to hear from you or, you know, how might you already be involved with? You know, working like, what are you doing now in healthy community and or in your personal and or municipal roles? You know, with related to prevention in your mind, what questions do you have? You know, the communities that you're most connected to and what you're most concerned about. Like I I want to do a little bit of listening. I wonder if you're willing. To share a little bit and then we can. And then we can see where some collaboration can be and also what you want to hear more about, because I'm happy to talk, but I also want to really hear from you about, you know, what, where you see, um, you know, opportunity, what you're already doing and how you're connected and then what your concerns are now. Does that sound okay as a way, way to use time today?
Do you want us to go around and introduce ourselves?
Yeah, sure. That's great. Yeah. And feel free to, you know, name anything at that point of how you connect to this or what this, our work, you know, how you connect to our work and in your way, what it means to you and then what, you know, and any concerns you have or thoughts you have. It'd be great.
Uh, Mike Parity, Select Board. Um, I'm just excited to see what you guys can offer. I mean, this is all kind of new to me.
Great. Nice to meet you.
Belinda Martin, um, I didn't realize that you had helped with the Pickleball group. They are very active. They meet every Sunday and seem to be growing and growing.
Great.
A great asset for the community, not only for them to get together, but to get some exercise.
Mm-hmm. That's great to hear. Yeah. So the prevention sponsorship, we really see it as, and they're still available, um, you know, for like either two fifty or five hundred dollar sponsorships that are for really community wellness, uh, connection and community, people feeling valued and sense of community. And there's some other details of other, uh, uh, you know, highlights for that prevention sponsorship. So if you can think of any other areas, um, you know, either from the municipality or from other groups within Wolkett, you know, there's still some, some funds available to send in on that, because we all, we see that as part of prevention, right? Like when our, when our community is engaged and finding ways to do things, even a little bit of that seed money can really go a long way.
Right.
Yeah. Who, who else is in the room or, or there? I can't really see.
Ellen.
Nate, hi there. Any connection to substance prevention or the spectrum or of treat spectrum, recovery, treatment, um, prevention, youth work, healthy community interests? Happy to hear. And are any concerns as well, or like what substances feel most concerning?
I think it comes to mine right now.
Okay. Who else is there?
Kurt Billings.
Oh, hi, yeah. Hi again.
Not bad.
Connected before. Is anyone else present?
Michelle Goodore, you and I have been in touch, actually, Allison, um.
Oh, yeah, hi. Hi. That's great.
Yeah, I'm the new Select Board Assistant, Administrative Assistant. I was just wondering, as you were saying, that you still had the sponsorships available.
Um, yes.
Wouldn't it cover something like a, a barn quilting class that we could offer? I mean, it doesn't.
What does that exactly? Tell me more.
Barn quilting or the, the wooden, large wooden uh, boards that people paint in the form of quilt, in the shape of quilts. And sometimes there, you know, you can research your family history to see if you actually have a designated geometric shape. Um, I don't know if that I don't, it, it's something that we thought about for our elder community. And we didn't grant for it, but it's still on my mind. I would still love.
I'm so glad you brought that up. Let me read what the funding supports, okay? Um, primary, I just put it in the chat also, so you can share the link with folks. Um, it supports primary and secondary prevention across the lifespan. So that definitely includes all populations across the lifespan. Regional priorities include reducing underage substance use, reducing adult high-risk substance use, supporting for the LGBTQ plus youth and creating a community where youth and adults feel valued, connected and supported. So it seems like, you know, it seems definitely, you know, if you, if you pitch it, it seems definitely like that is something that could potentially be funded.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. And, you know, I just, I really want to go back to, um, you know, having the conversation and hearing more. You know, I don't know if folks have youth in their lives or what you hear out there, but you know, just thinking about alcohol, let's just talk about alcohol, cannabis, nicotine, tobacco, vaping. Like those are the substances we most connect around, though of course I'm connected to opiates and other drug use because of working with the recovery community and treatment. But when you think about alcohol, cannabis, tobacco, vaping, like how much, uh, do you hear about it? What questions do you have? What concerns do you have? Uh, what, you know, what, what comes to mind from your own community, your own relationships, uh, what you see or hear, the news? I can't see the Select Board. I just see Michelle, but that's maybe they need to talk first.
Talk, yeah.
Yeah, I'm wondering if someone can, can.
We don't have an owl.
Okay.
And owl goes around and it goes, the picture goes where the person's talking.
Got it. Okay. Well, it's okay. I can hear you. If you could just identify who you are when you speak, because I can't see every, oh. Someone's helping me out. Thank you. Um, yeah. Any, you know, even in those three substances, is there any one of those that you feel like is most concerning or that you think about or that you want to know more about, uh, either around policy or just around, you know, the facts, the data?
I guess I don't really hang out with people, but but I am very, very, very sad that so many of, they're not close friends, but friends or acquaintances have been dying lately of liver, you know, from over drinking. Too young, too many.
Wow, I'm sorry to hear that. That is definitely concerning. Um, yeah, I mean, alcohol is the most used substance. You know, it's used at the highest rates of any substance. And sometimes people don't recognize or see that. Um, and the data shows that across the, across the lifespan. Um, you know, in our area, not to alarm you all, but like even with the newest, uh, youth risk behavior survey data and other data, like Lemoyle County is, uh, has some of the highest rates in the state and especially for cannabis and cannabis. Actually, we have not only some of, some of the highest rates in, in the state, um, certain populations of, you know, if you look at certain, um, you know, age groups, et cetera, but that puts us at the top in the, in the country. Um, Vermont has the highest rates in the country. And so, you know, so for example, like I've been to, um, you know, your retailer and made a connection. We've, um, created some partnerships, like Mike, you're asking types of things that we do. Um, you know, with municipalities, we really work on, um, can help with municipal planning, with different policies, with health and wellness-related, um, activities and or, um, just thinking about those goals and recommendations for a town, but also any kind of signage. You know, if you're having big, some events and you want to think about, do we want this to be a substance-free event? Or do we want this to be a substance-free space or tobacco-free? Or how do we want to think about helping folks, um, you know, and, and helping folks like who are, let's say, are planning the event and how might we want to help support planning them with to have like this kind of prevention lens in mind? That's really about, uh, you know, youth development, having family-friendly events. I mean, Wolkett, to be honest, was one of the first, uh, when I started seven years ago, one of the only, uh, towns that actually had a health and wellness chapter in the town plan, like that was really kind of connecting to it. And now some of the other towns like Hyde Park really took it to another level. Um, you know, if you'd like to see what they, the planning commission just approved, um, I think like two weeks ago to move on, uh, you know, it's like really looking at all different types of ways the town can think about health and wellness of all different populations, inclusivity of, um, of access for different populations, looking at mental health, looking at substance use, looking at aging well, housing, you know, all different areas. So those are, you know, some things with municipalities, but with retailers, like I, I work with our local substance retailers, like, uh, who sell adult, adult-use substances of tobacco, alcohol, cannabis and say, okay, we all have one goal in common. We don't want um, youth to be using, right? We don't want youth under twenty-one to have access to the substances. So how do we use that goal and how do we think together? So we created some uh, stickers with some of our retailers that say, like for cannabis retailers in particular, say, secure your stash, keep, keep kids and safe um, sub, um, healthy. And it's an attractive, um, sticker that a lot of the retailers, when I show up, they, they really like it. I said, I'd love to have that because they really, you know, they, they're thinking about, um, you know, their customers and they, they want to make sure that youth aren't using. So we look for ways that we can help support folks, get folks the resources also that they need and get get the agencies or the stores or the municipality, you know, anything that you think that's coming up that you might need. And like then also for Green Up Day, we usually have a, um, special survey of where do folks see remnants of substances in their communities? So like are there locations or times of year where you see lots of alcohol cans or lots of cigarette butts or, you know, are you finding you know, or, or even needles, unfortunately, that I know LCPC, when, with working with them and we were doing a mapping, uh, kind of a mapping project, thinking about, um, you know, down by the river or lake or whatnot, like are they, where are we finding things and is that a trend or is it a one-off? And how do we just help to, um, to put in the factors that, that protect people and youth, um, from negative outcomes? Anyone else have, uh, I'd love to have someone else jump in. Any questions?
It would be great if you could send Michelle, um, the Hyde Heart Wellness Section, um, because we are starting, we are working on a municipal plan, actually, um, Michael's on working on that and it'd be good to share that.
Perfect, I will. And is Seth working with you guys or Megan or who from LCPC is working with you?
Tori.
Tori, I think it's Tori.
Oh, Tori. Oh, Tori is, great. So, um, yeah, Megan was the one, Megan was LCPC staff working with Hyde Park and she said she was going to start bringing it around as well. So I will definitely send that, I think, um, you know, and then to, to see what you think and to make it your own, you know, we're here, we have lots of documents to help support you. I'm happy to send that along also. I'm still wondering, you know, any questions about any substances or data, local data or thought, even, you know, thoughts on, you know, cannabis coming to your town, cannabis retail. I know you've got a, you've got a, um, cannabis control, um, decision tonight on a cultivator, like.
But we don't have any control over. We just have to rubber stamp it.
Yeah.
I haven't heard any complaints um, from anyone.
Yeah, there's, um.
Has anyone else? It's been quiet, um.
Mm-hmm.
There's not many places in Wolkett for people to gather and it's winter.
Uh-huh. How do you think that impacts residents and the town?
Yeah, I don't think it's good.
What do you mean? That you don't have a place, like a, a place to gather, like a?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Where do people gather? Like.
More, more, I guess, or something. We are working on, hopefully in a few years, having a cafe and some gathering spaces, but, um, not quite yet.
Wow, that's really, that's really great to hear. Um, and I wonder how we could also, you know, help support. We, you know, we know a lot of things in, in prevention and just in the work that we do. We know that one caring adult matters in the life of a child, right? That's one of the biggest protective factors. Um, and we also know that community and sense of belonging, uh, feeling valued, um, you know, being, being able to not be isolated, be together is also, um, you know, a big part of the prevention work and, and, uh, yeah, are there any, you know, any things that are coming to mind? I'm really glad for the conversation, just to hear, you know, what your thoughts are and, um, you know, and what your concern, you know, and if any concerns come up to be able to, to connect. You know, we have a community planning toolkit. We have, we have a lot of resources to kind of work on or in the town planning process, but really it's about like, what are you, what are you caring about right now? And, um, you know, is there anything related to health, wellness, substances that, you know, that we can help support you with or, um, we could help support entities within Wolkett? Um, whether it's the businesses or any organizations or, you know, any, uh, planning around trails or parks or events, um, ways you do bring people together, the library, the school. Um, we definitely work with the schools, all the schools and connection with the libraries over, over, over time. Um, so just want to be out there to reconnect with you all to let you know that we are here. And, you know, if you see even a possible connection, someone mentioned something, now you know about the prevention sponsorship. So let's say, I don't know, Sally, you know, somebody mentions there is something you might say, oh, have you heard about the Healthy Lemoyle Valley Prevention Sponsorship? Or have you heard about, or, oh, I have a question. Someone starts talking about vaping or someone, some topic or if someone's planning an event, you know, we have an event checklist that can help towns or event planners just think about coming from a family-friendly, youth-friendly and also recovery-friendly lens. Um, because we want to also make sure that, you know, we're, we're thinking about, um, triggers for people who are in recovery and that we're creating, you know, safe spaces and environments for everyone. So we really partner with all different stakeholders and just want to make sure I was a face to Healthy Lemoyle Valley. Um, and I'm happy to come in or meet one-on-one to go in more depth. I know I don't have a lot of more, more time, but as, as things come up, feel free to email me. I'm on the email that Michelle sent out for today, um, in the meeting. And if there are any other questions, I'm happy to, to take them or, you know, to come back if you come up with like, you want to hear more data around something specific, you know, I can come back with a specific presentation based on your own interests.
So I've heard you mention signage a couple of times in some, in some statistics. Have you seen that the, the signage is effective? I'm thinking, you know, the town, we don't have the town forests yet. There's no parking lot or anything. There's
Yeah.
But we do have a lot of kind of unmonitored, unlit parking spaces, parking areas in town. Um, have you seen that signage in those areas could be effective?
I think in a couple of ways. Um, one way, we know from experience and some data that when you have signage and there are, there are uh, let's say groups around or multiple people, that it helps empower, it, it's like community enforcement in a way. So if I'm there on the trail or somewhere in the parking lot with my kids and there's some, and someone's standing smoking that I see a sign, say, oh, excuse me, do you mind? Um, or, you know, you, you might, someone's more likely to, uh, say something as part of just community ethos or, or community, community mind. The signage that we provided, you prob, I don't know if you've seen, but it's often not no substances, you know, it's, it's sometimes taking in even like, uh, you know, keep your dog on a leash or whatever other policies you have for an open space and just thinking about how do we say, welcome to our trails and our community or, you know, let's keep this a, a, um, you know, a healthy space for, for everyone. And so we do see that signage helps. Um, we have different kinds of signage. So there's permanent signage that we can really design with you and print for you, that you don't have to pay for, you'll just have to put up. Then there's, uh, the temporary signage that's like yard signs, like if you're having an event. And we've seen that really helpful. So for example, at Lemoyle County Field Days, um, which I'm sure folks are familiar with, um, we've been working with them the past number of years and they had noticed that down the midway that even people who they were telling us, people who smoked were even saying it was too smoky to walk down the midway at Lemoyle County Field Days. So we had, um, you know, some sessions with them to figure out what to do and we created lots of yards. we created lots of yard signs that like are really beautiful. Actually, it's like kids on a Ferris wheel saying, keep, you know, keep this space, um, keep the air uh, you know, clean for for all our kids or families, right? And like all the way down the midway. And since then, they've really seen a dramatic change. They did move to having a designated smoking area that was separate. And so that's an example of like an event that really shifted culture. I think if you have unlit um dark spaces, you know, we've worked with uh the Johnson Skate Park, for example, to try to help shift culture. Uh, you know, it's a challenge, especially if there's no enforcement. We understand, you know, in in the smaller towns in in our state and in Lemoyle County that uh, you know, they're not often patrolled, but it depends on what kind of substances you're seeing. Like if you're, if you're seeing substance use and the remnants of it, then that's like that other level I was talking about of saying, okay, is this a trend? What's happening? How do we address it and comprehensive? Maybe it's a sign, maybe it's a receptacle, maybe it's something, or it's a, we also can provide um, not an, it's not an urn, but it's like a cigarette butt collector that um is actually kind of sleek looking and quite nice. It's um, it's made in New England and uh with um with metal like a welder and um, and it has some resources on it, but it's also, you know, thinking of what other types of, you know, interventions we might help support you with in those spaces by looking at them together, walking through, seeing how they're used, when they're used, what issues are coming up. I don't know if that's helpful, but those are some of my thoughts.
Yeah, I think I think if those spaces get used more, it would be nice to to see what we may need in those areas.
Okay, that's great.
The Ballfield, the new parking lot at the North Wilkett Ballfield, that has had a couple of, he's had a little trouble there, so.
The new parking lot at the Ballfield?
Yeah, the North Wilkert Road Ballfield, we put a new parking lot in up there as a part of that whole revitalization thing. And my dad happens to live across the street from there. And I know that he's had uh some people at strange hours and some strange, strange goings on. So I'll have to pick his brain and see what is actually happening.
Yeah, I think as, you know, as you learn, as you learn more, definitely, that's definitely something that we can be involved with and thinking about. And, you know, it's not just us, like it could, that could be a community, like just thinking about it or, you know, just knowing, learning more before acting and always listening to people first, like what's actually going on. So that's definitely something. I'm glad you brought that up. Thanks for mentioning it. And uh, yeah, let's keep that conversation going.
Well, I appreciate you coming tonight and explaining things. It gives us a lot to think about. I I charted down a few notes myself. Um, I'm sure we'll be back in touch with you.
Terrific. Yeah, thanks so much for the time. Uh, good to folks that I didn't know. And, you know, I know it's like, you know, here I am. And for folks who haven't heard this before, you know, as it sinks in and you start to look around and, you know, kind of open your eyes to to some of the topics in a in a new way, maybe, uh, it be, don't hesitate to be in touch. And again, I'm happy to come to you. I just couldn't make it happen tonight. So happy, happy to meet up.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Allison.
Thanks.
So we're not, we don't have a project manager's report?
I can read what Kirk says. Um, uh, he said, please send along to the board that there's no change from the board, the last board meeting. Ranger and Associated Roads, is the last project still open? It did advance through FEMA system last week, but it's not yet been obligated. Okay, so um, been working on a lot of little things the last two weeks, but in particular, helping budget-wise, I was able to get into Google, the Google account Bradley and I, and we downgraded the uh, the Gmails. We had six users. We downgraded to five because Bradley had an account that he'd never used. Um, and you're paying per account. Um, and then we opted to pay annually rather than monthly. And then we also downgraded from the business to the the essential account. And so by doing these three, s- doing these three um changes, we're going to be saving about five hundred dollars annually. So I think that's about the best that we can get. If we need, decide that we need more uh drive room, Google Drive, if we start sharing everything, we're currently at something like fifty and we have up to a hundred fifty um uh gigabytes on the shared drive, then we'll have to upgrade the policy. But right now, I think we're good. A lot of that was like FEMA photos and things like that.
Are we obligated to keep those photos once we're done with FEMA?
I think they're very useful.
Um, three years, but they are totally useful.
Yeah. I just, do they need to be on the drive or could we buy a hundred dollar hard drive and?
Oh, we can definitely buy.
Just thinking about trying not to to upgrade the subscription again.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Or just put them on whenever, but I have them on drive for now because they're accessible.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
That makes sense. So after three years, move them on. Um, or even before, that's a good idea. Um, I submitted all of the forced account labor and forced account equipment sheets to FEMA for the twenty twenty-four flooding. Um, all invoices have also been submitted as well as that means includes materials and contractors. Um, and then Parker Hayman, our our EGM, project manager, um, will be entering this info. He's already working now on trying to get the the debris removal. There are three, we have three claims essentially, and the debris removal is one of them. So he's working on the debris removal for Elmore Pond Road because we are able to claim any work that we did, which was a lot significant as far as the work that we did and contractors did for debris removal. Um, and then he'll be moving forward with the other two claims. Once that happens, then we pass through to hazard mitigation for the five incomplete projects, which are three culverts on East Hill and two culverts on Marsh Road. And then also, we'll be working with Bruce Turnb- Turnbull, who is the same person who worked with us on twenty twenty-three for project mitigation, hazard mitigation. And he said that he will also look at any completed projects that we had done, that maybe we just put in a culvert, but we didn't line it with rocks and things like that, that he might be able to give us money to expand those projects. Um, can't tell you about when that will happen. Their timelines are a little, I don't fully understand their timelines. Um, and also, I've been working on entering the culvert data into the town road worksheet. So I have it on paper and I can get it into the spreadsheets. So that's mainly, those are the main maybe items that I've been working on. Is it permitting?
Thank you. You're working on the highway grants?
Yes, but they're not. They're in various stages.
Okay, um revisit L, the LCT survey question, what is your town's most pressing infrastructure need over the next year?
So I talked to, you had asked me to talk to Dylan and and get his prioritization. And and he had said, for him, it's mainly upsizing or replacing culverts. He'd like to do ten culverts per year. Um, as well as uh, we had, the board had identified, had identified culverts. Um, they also identified across from four-wheel drive, the bridge, upsizing the bridge or widening it, uh, the board identified repairs to the federal aid highway, North Wilkett Road, and widen certain areas. Dylan agreed. He said the intersection of North Wilkett Road and Route fifteen needs to uh be redesigned to accommodate the trucks and make the turn safe. He'd like to see enhanced rip rap on the banks where needed. Um.
Banks of rivers?
Yes. And then he'd like to set the new asphalt strip base and apply the new base up. He would, he would like to actually tear up the base of the road and this would cost a million. I mean, you're looking at a million to two million dollar grant to rip up the rim, the asphalt and set a thicker base instead of just keep applying thin over it. But we're not really sure where we're going to find funding for that. I mean, that's, that's a, an interesting grant.
Better wait four years.
I, yeah, I don't know that the town could grant that right now, there. Um. Those are his priorities. And then finally, the board identified the bridge, the bridge on School Street near the buyouts, um, being in bad shape. I'm working on that now. Um, and we talked about it last, last meeting as well. Um, working on getting the hydraulic study. I've emailed Michelle Redman about getting hydraulic study. And there's another study that we were going to get. And then Seth has said that he could get us some information if we don't already have traffic studies and things like that, so that he can kind of work on getting the traffic study done on School Street. So I don't know if you want me to list culverts at the moment, or if you'd like me to list the repairs to North Wilkett Road as our most pressing infrastructure need.
Do we just get to pick one?
Seem to me like we could. I can list two or three. I can list up four if you'd like, but.
Might as well.
Okay.
Better connections, design, resolution, signatures?
Um, you had, I, we have the signatures. The board just needs to authorize either Alec Jones or me to submit the grant uh tomorrow or Friday. I would prefer that you ask Alec to do it. Um, that would be my preference since he has all of the paperwork. And I've got a half day tomorrow, but um I will email him tonight, the signatures that we received for the resolution as well as the grant. This was already approved on January fifteenth at the SLF meeting. I believe Alec needs a a board motion to authorize.
I'd make a motion to authorize Alec.
A second.
I'll start it.
Did, did Mark, Kurt, Rachel and Kurt? Okay, I thought one second.
All those in favor, I propose so carry. We need to uh approve uh mixed cultivator tier one, small cultivator, application number S zero 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 one one three four one.
So I have that if y'all need this copy of it. I just have a copy, but.
Yeah, I think you should pass it around. We're not allowed to say the place and its name or address. Um.
I also, I have the letter because we are responsible for contacting the um abutting properties. So I just dropped it a letter that we will send out. My question is, it says that once this forty-five days is passed, which would put us at uh March thirty-first, then having heard from us or not, this goes, this is approved, what I understood. So do I send this letter out to abutting properties before this gets, before the forty that, forty-five days passes or I will?
I don't think so, but um.
Sounds like they catch twenty-two.
I mean, there's nothing.
So you don't send it out to the zoning administrator?
The zone, but I said that I would do that. You guys said that um in our brief discussion, you said that you would figure out who you wanted, then mail that out. But I I told Tom at least I would type it up for him. So this is the letter that's going to come.
How does the wording say in that?
Uh, in the document, I'm not sure that, but I'm pretty sure it has to come out from the zoning, from the town. It said actually the town.
Um, okay. So no, I mean, we're gonna, it's already been approved, but it's not staged. We're gonna prove it tonight because we don't have any reason not to. It's not near a school. So I would send it out tomorrow.
But then the abutter, the letters of abutment should go out. That's my question. I think they, I think they should go out after we know that the state sends that out at forty-five.
There you go, so that's a question.
Bye, Allison.
Thanks. Yeah, I, you know, I was just thinking about it and I I know that, you know, you were saying, you know, it's like a rubber stamp and I'm just trying to brainstorm here. I have had a good relationship with building relationship with with retailers. I haven't started building relationship with cultivators. Um, I think it's just a capacity issue or timing. And I know it can't be a requirement, like you can put some conditions on licenses and with cannabis, it's tricky. You know, I know with like alcohol and tobacco, you can do things that you can't do with cannabis. And there's also, um, you know, you might be able to do like some kind of ordinance or something related to all adult use substances, including cannabis. Anyway, my point being is that I wonder if with a letter sent out, sent of like a select board potential, like recommendation that a cultivator, as they're getting their business started, um, it can't be required, but like here's some resources. Here's Healthy Lemoyle Valley, our local Substance Prevention Coalition. They really want to talk about youth prevention and um and be a partner and be part, you know, in collaboration coalition. And I don't know, and maybe there are other, you know, types of, add some other things that you want to include in a letter, um, you know, to a cultivator or someone else who's in town of some, you know, some recommendations. I know it can't be requirement, but you know, it's it's just food for thought of a way of of connecting, um, you know, from your level. Like I could always reach out and get a list of cultivators or lead a list of, or see like, oh, that you got approved and I can reach out on my own, you know, following up on your letter. But um, I wonder, you know, any thoughts on some seeing what you.
We're, we're just required to send it out to the abutting properties to this grower.
Yeah.
To notify them that um the board had received this application from the state. That's all was our requirement.
Exactly.
Because we can't do anything if it's not in our zoning, you know, we can't.
Right, right.
Restrictions on.
Exactly. Which is why I'm saying this can't be a requirement. But I wonder if there's something in the letter of listing some of the local resources, if they're interested either for the abutting properties or even, you know, I'm saying in particular for the licensees, you know, like for or any other licensees that come to town. Like maybe you will have another retail license come to town. You may, you may have others come, or maybe they think the markets are saturated or right now they're not even giving retail licenses if they're they're on a hiatus. But um, you know, even in a letter to a cultivator, you know, or licensee to say, or or even a tobacco or alcohol licensee, you know, in their renewal process to like, you know, I could give you some, you know, of our business cards to send, hey, you know, these, you know, here's a card of our local Substance Prevention Coalition or the Recovery Center or the Mental Health Services. Like, these are resources that you can reach out to to have, provide for your customers or for your, you know, just for your own knowledge. Here's a list of some supports or or resources. I don't know what it would look like. I'm just brainstorming, but it occurred to me that, you know, even though you can't require, what are the opportunities in in other ways that the select board might or the, you know, local Cannabis Control Commission could do?
As long as um, I mean, I personally don't have a problem uh with that as long as you know, we're not putting out say, information that um.
Okay, but it's sort of restricted, is that what you?
Um. I don't know.
Yeah, it's like, um, I work with some, for example, I work with some HR directors who like with a paycheck, might send out some additional resources, like within the paycheck kind of thing. Like, here's, here's a way of, here's some other community information about our community or, you know, or a, you know, or about uh that we want to, you know, or, you know, or, you know, or about that we want to, you know, here's some information, take it or leave it, right? It's like, here's some other resources in the community. Here's a list of them, maybe Healthy Lemoyle Valley is one on a list. Maybe it's like some brochures. Maybe it's just, you know, these are, these are organizations who would be happy to connect if, if you're interested. It just, just an idea to think about. You can, you know, bring it back. You don't have to have a response now, but it occurred to me to, you know, as I'm sitting here listening.
The rest of the board, Bill? Why don't we think on it and see?
Yeah, that's great. Would you like me to like maybe draft something to share back, like to look at something tangible? Or do you want to just think about it?
So how would you, what would you be writing to someone in a budding landowner that, to a grower?
I mean, it could be, you know, here's a letter, you know, here are some related local organizations that, that we're in contact with. Or here, here's a list of local organizations if you wanted to reach out for any resources or support. Something like that, simple. You know, and it could have like, you know, a list of variety of, you know, local resources that you might think are, are valuable. The hospital, poison control, Healthy Lemoyle Valley. Maybe you put your rec commission on there or, yeah, I don't know. You know, just like here's some local, you know what I mean? Like here's some local, local, I, I'm not sure. You know, I'm, I'm thinking about it. If it's specific to substance use, that, you know, maybe they have some questions or, you know, they want to reach out to someone. I'm, I was thinking specifically for the licensee themselves. The abutting property I thought was interesting because, you know, I don't know. I was putting myself in the shoes of someone getting a letter. I don't know. Do I have kids? What am I thinking? I don't know what the abutting properties are like, you know, and how do I, how do I feel about it? Here are some resources if you want to reach out to some folks that, you know, you know, as a recommend, you know, not even I'd say recommendation, but here we wanted just also to provide these additional local resources. Maybe that's as simple as it gets.
Yeah, if it's as simple as that, something like that would be all right. And we won't, we won't be talking to the, the grower. And we won't have any need for contact. I don't know if you invited that person tonight or not.
Oh, were they invited?
No.
Huh. And they didn't just show up or know about it. So that, I mean, I guess that also could be part of the licensing. I mean, I wonder if as a condition, you know, that, you know, if you wanted it to be considered that you meet someone who's going to start a business in, in town, like maybe it's not just cannabis, it's like all adult use substances and for, as part of the renewal process. Come talk to us, tell us what it's, how it's going. Here, here's some information, ask some questions.
Well, the whole idea is to keep it, it's anonymous. We can't even say that person's name. So why would that person?
Oh, this part is anon, I under. Right, right, right. This, this part is anonymous, I understand. So where in the process would it be? But when there's, so that's in the cannabis, but for tobacco and alcohol, it's different. And for license renewal.
We only have the Wulka, the Wulka country store is the only one we have.
Right, right, right. Yeah. So, you know, just thinking, you never, you never know, like Mars Town now has five cannabis retailers, right? You know, you know, just to dump, I'm planting some seeds, I'm brainstorming along the way. So anyway, if you see an opportunity for like a, we also want to share these resources or even on your website, you know, like to share additional local resources. There are some towns who have different sections for different things. I'm happy to contribute or, you know, support in any way as something would come up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for hearing or brainstorming with me.
Yeah, we're trying to navigate this whole thing too, because it seems silly that it comes to us. I mean, we get to see who it is, but other than that, that's it.
Well, I guess there could be a system that once it's approved, I'm just brainstorming again, and we can do this also offline. But I wonder like once licenses are approved, there could be a process that either I am regularly checking when our local town, like I have 15 towns in my area, catchment area, but like, or if you know of someone and then it is approved and then you know who they are, that like that's passed to me or then there's a reach out or, you know, I just go follow up on my own, just like I do with weeds, right? Like I've, I've been there, I, I've connected and as a resource and shared a whole folder and packet and resources and, and plan to come back. It was a couple of months ago. So, you know, every so often come back, hey, how'd those resources go? What do you think now? Should I, you know, do you want different kinds of resources? Do you want to co-create something new? So, you know, if you think of any systems within what exists that's possible, you know, to collaborate, I'm here.
So did we make a motion to accept this yet?
I'll make a motion that we accepted and. I make a motion that we accept license or applicant number, license numbers S 000011341. Cannabis cultivator.
Give a second.
Is that, Phil, something?
Any further discussion?
Just one question, making sure that I understood this correctly. Hypothetically speaking, should this board not have approved this? In 45 days, they get the state license anyway?
Yes, same as zoning, ERB. You don't, someone that signed it, it's not met and proved.
Fantastic.
It's not set into rubber.
I just went the last few minutes digging through the stuff that you've shared with us earlier and seeing if I have ideas.
All those in favor?
I.
I propose so carry.
Linda, did you have something about town hall, town meeting?
Yeah. So town meeting, I just want to, Kurt, if you would be wanting to, if there were questions directed about the East Till Land, you'd be willing to address them? Okay. Just going to ask Witcher to do the salary part. They just don't want to do all the talking. We're all aboard together. That's all right.
I don't mind talking about taking the lease, patrolling out separate.
Okay.
I looked at the total and it was only 17, sorry, 77 tickets handed out through a whole year. They could do that in a month. And after Rogers' comment that if there's more urgent or overtaking crimes that patrolling is the least on the list.
Yeah, it happens in spare time.
It's a spare time thing. So we don't really want to do it because it takes an officer's time to go to court to say, yeah, I gave the guy a ticket and this is what it was.
Okay.
To me, I think, why should we pay $300,000 for something we're not going to get? Because we do get a share of the fee for the speeding.
So billings, Kurt?
You might put it in the minutes. I don't, just know, just that the board discussed different jobs, that there are aspects they're going to talk about at town meetings, fine. Just so everybody can have a little part. What do you want? You got the budget.
Because I've been chirping about the budget.
I'll, I'll work with you.
Yes, sure, I can.
But I mean, I. If they don't ask questions, there's nothing to say. But, you know, it's, it's good to have a point person to know more about a certain aspect of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I could have taken, I think where I was the, the most involved was probably the highway portion of the budget.
Okay.
I'd be happy to see you.
Right, all right.
I think you didn't bring up with Joe, what is the plea?
Yeah, I forgot about it.
That's like Article 5.
Right. If he doesn't understand that, I mean, if people ask why it was put back in the morning, then Kurt can answer those questions. If you have, and we have any wastewater questions, do you want to, you know, to talk to them about that?
I'm with it.
Okay. So it's getting late. I have two little updates. One is, well, I talked about the Northern Rivers would take those donations. Someone from Department of Environmental Conservation today called, they want to know if the select board would be willing to hold a capital for a day on February 28th here in Wulka. They would invite wastewater committee members, select board members, interested community members, and they would bring people from Department of Environmental Conservation, community development, and possibly the governor. I don't know the time. I think in the day.
What day is that, February 28th?
Yes. To come and hear about what's going on in Wulka. I told him yes. He wanted me to ask the board. And if he, and I guess he wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with discussing all this. Have we had any problems with that?
Did you call it capital for the day?
Capital for a day. I think what it means is they bring people from a pillar to a community. They're most interested in the wastewater and the support the governor's given for this and the money and the board.
You don't have to tie me up.
I know, I know, no. That's all I have. I believe we need a motion to go into executive session.
I have one other.
Okay.
I.
Thank you.
Michelle, a rough sketch of the Fisher Bridge that would possibly go on to the signage.
Signage or what?
Over here to the little arc that you want to start at the side of the rail trail.
Yeah, it's between the, that's Mike Green's project.
I didn't know if anyone else on the board wanted to look at it or see it or whatever.
Did you bring it?
She hasn't.
I had, she wanted to go grab it. You shared it with Mike? I sent him a text.
I mean, I spent three, four hours doubling around. Nothing, very nothing, but I just wanted to know if that was.
The trouble is I have not been involved in what he's doing, so I don't know even what he's looking for.
Well, they were thinking the same as a road sign. It says, okay, it's such and such road, put that over there and then say it's so many miles to Morseville or so many miles to Hardwick. Then on the backside saying Wulka Rest Area and then some sort of little history about the rail trail. I mean, if they were to take the darker lines and use that, I think it'd be fine, but not put in all the, the fine detail that I did would be fine. It's basically after the patch that we had for the Wulka fire department.
Very nice.
I mean, they can take it and enlarge it or whatever, make it a three to one or two to one to make it fit. Because usually the plaques are, I think, two and a half or three foot by nine inch.
Right.
We can make it fit properly on the dimension.
Yeah. I'll have to see what they end up with the signage, but I, I think that's awesome.
But there was actually seven bridges by work of that design.
Yeah. Motion to go into executive session.
No, it's still pending business after that, so I can have a video.
I don't know. Are you going to be asking us to make any kind of motion tonight?
I don't think I am.
Okay.
Do you think the motion would be present as well?
Oh, yeah. And I'd like to amend my motion to have Michelle around as well.
I'll circle that. All those in favor?
Start recording and Zoom meeting is going to end.